We'll find any excuse.
I'd like to call the Township of North Huntington Board of Commissioners a regular meeting for Wednesday, July 16th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Roll call, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel?
Here.
Commissioner Atwood?
Here.
Commissioner Gray?
Here.
Commissioner Zona?
Here.
Commissioner Bevan?
Here.
President Haggas?
Here. Could everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and opening prayer by Pastor Amber from Calvary Church?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't believe the pastor is here, so maybe we'll just have a moment of silence, please. Thanks. Thank you. If any residents would like to speak tonight, could you please sign the book of the podium? Thank you. And just to review, a citizen's input, every citizen's allowed a five minutes to speak. If the citizen does become disruptive or disorderly, they'll be asked to leave the premises and the property. And if they choose not to leave, we'll escort them off the premises and property. Our first resident is Nick. If you come up the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Nick. I mean, you couldn't have given me a more beautiful opening, Mr. Haggas. As you're aware, there have been attempts made by members of this governing body to silence my voice, particularly when expressing grievances publicly before you. My elected representatives and my fellow citizens, allow me to remind you clearly, the First Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees my fundamental right to speak freely without undue restraint, including arbitrary time restrictions, and ensures my unequivocal right to petition and redress my governing body, especially concerning issues directly under your authority, issues you yourselves have acknowledged on the record during public meeting or your res- right? You're the Oversight Committee, Rich, on the record. To this end, moving forward, I will no longer accept or comply with unconstitutional limitations placed upon my freedom of speech or my ability to petition the governing body. I fully intend to maintain a calm and professional demeanor, however, I firmly assert my rights and will publicly discuss at every township meeting the seriousness and ongoing grievances that my family and I have endured alongside broader public safety and corruption concerns within North Huntington Township. You will not impose a time constraint on my ability to fully articulate these critical issues. The position is strongly supported by relevant legal precedent and constitutional protections. For instance, the Pennsylvania Constitution, Article One, Section Seven explicitly affirms that citizens have the undeniable right to apply to those invested with the powers of government for redress of grievances. At the federal level, landmark cases such as City of Madison, Joint School District Number Eight v. Wisconsin Employment Relations Commission clearly establishes that public meetings are quintessential public forums protected by the First Amendment, where restrictions on speech must be narrowly tailored and serve a compelling state interest. Additionally, in Galena v. Leon, Third Circuit, 1980, the court emphasized that public officials must tolerate substantial criticism and cannot suppress speech merely because it is uncomfortable or critical of government actions. Furthermore, in Pennsylvania, cases such as the Commonwealth v. Tate underscore the public forum should remain open for meaningful and effective redress, particularly when addressing serious allegations of government misconduct and public safety threats. These rights become especially critical considering the severity of my family's situation, which has persisted unresolved for over a year. Disturbing releva- disturbing revelations continue to emerge, including the presence of a police officer at the scene who failed to file a statement, allegations involving the threat of deadly force, and astonishing failures in evidence collection so egregious that officers have contacted me nearly a year later seeking evidence from me. The police department called today asking me for evidence. I said, "Go on my Facebook. All the evidence is on my Facebook page." I urge this body respectfully yet unequivocally to fulfill your obligations and allow me, without hindrance, to share the complete account of what my family has endured. Each statement I make will stand on the public record bearing witness to your response or inaction. Understand clearly, every failure to adequately respond will become another documented step towards holding you accountable. You- the courts have decided that you guys can put time limits to keep the order of the meeting, okay? We- we don't need an unlimited amount of time to articulate that the garbage service in North Huntington sucks. I mean, you- they're trying to use the machines to pick up our seniors' bags and they're ripping our seniors' ba- I see senior citizens on the side of the road picking their garbage up, or they're just not coming. Those are things that you are allowed to put time restrictions on. What I'm speaking of, you have no right or authority to give me any t- if I need to stand here for two hours because you guys have made that big of a mess, then I have every right to inform my citizens and get my family's story on the record. So when that time's out, I'm not leaving. I'm gonna begin to tell my story and you can, for the fifth time, these guy- I feel bad for you, Carter. You, I know you unwri- you write crazy traffic tickets. You cleared almost 200K one year. You're a sergeant. $200,000 you took home as a sergeant? As you informed citizens to go to the hearing so you can get your overtime? All your department had to do was their job, and I wouldn't know nothing about you, Ms. Bauer, but this is what happens when you shit on an American citizen who knows his rights. And the chief not being here is ridiculous. I know he's planning to retire in January. Harry, you're swimming in your suit. You need to go see a doctor. This stress cannot be good for you. So now, well, the time's out. I'll begin my grievance. Again, just how- let's not-
You can finish your comments.
No, 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 no. I made it explicitly clear to you. So now you have the same decision you had last time. Are you gonna have them remo- have them remove me? I'm not gonna resist.
You can peacefully leave or I'm gonna ask some- ask officers to take you out.
No. No, not- not till I'm done.
You're not gonna peacefully leave?
No, I'm not. Not till I'm done.
Officer, you wanna escort Nick out?
Thanks, guys. Oh, man, they thought I had to get up behind the desk and everything. Oh, yeah, that's your job. You don't- you don't do your job any other time. But you'll do your job when you in a violent- don't walk fast on me, McCarty. They're watching you. You got- they told me you let it temper. They told me you let it temper.
All right. Our next resident's Dustin. If you wanna come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Don't back me down like that. Don't back me down like that. You let it temper. Don't talk. Don't keep it up.
My name's Dustin. I reside in North Huntington. And you don't have to worry, Commissioners. I'm not coming here to curse you out this week. Just figured you could use a little taste of what Eric Goss had to endure whenever he tried to get transparency here and got a nice phone call from Chief Rizzo that following night. But in all seriousness, any residents that found what I had to say last week, I do apologize to them. That was not my intent to cause any offense, but I did have a lesson I wanted to teach you all and a point to really make there. And it is that you as elected officials, or any elected officials within this country, have absolutely zero authority to limit or disrupt legal free speech that is protected under the First Amendment. And I'm talking even just turning on your microphone and interrupting me multiple times during doing so. I'd consider that quite an impediment on my First Amendment. But going forward, you know, in my time at St. Vincent College, believe it or not, I didn't spend it all just reading the Holy Bible. I had courses that extensively covered the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution of the United States of America, the Bill of Rights. We even got into works about- but by John Locke, Montesquieu, all who paved way for a lot of our laws, foundational laws that we have today. And so, just to say the very least, when I see those foundational laws that this country was built upon, I just- I can't help but get passionate about it. And sometimes when I get passionate, I get colorful. So that's what happens there with my speech. And, you know, honestly, and out of all those politics courses and criminal justice courses I took at St. Vincent, believe it or not, the biggest thing that has ever stuck with me there was from my business ethics course with a man. He was my professor of that course. He was in the German Special Forces, went on to become a very successful businessman over in Europe, and ended up whistleblowing on a very big bank doing very bad things before making our beautiful country here his home. And just the biggest thing I learned from him that I will never forget to this day is when he told us in that class that we as Americans take our First Amendment right, our freedom of speech, for such granted, because there's nowhere else in this world that allows for freedom of speech like we do here in the United States of America. And so, just to come here and see you folks desecrate that just makes me angry beyond belief. It's appalling. And I mean, he explains it pretty good to you all as well, Mr. Carosa there. It's just, you know, I- I don't know how to get through to you folks anymore. I've come to you here very cordially, differently than how I did last week, and I just, I don't know how to get it through your heads anymore. And like Nick had said, you had mentioned it, you are the Police Oversight Committee. That's what you said. You called us a bunch of communists when we asked for a Police Oversight Committee, and you said you are. And when, my first time I ever came here cordially, I asked you all, please, are you going to sit down and watch that body camera footage from July 7th, 2024? And I know on good cause, I know damn near for a fact that you folks did not. You did not. You had that investigation and came back six days later here and said that the claims that were made about the firearm were unfounded. I know you didn't watch that body camera footage, none of you Commissioners, my- my Police Oversight Committee. So I just, I don't know. I don't know what to do anymore. And I would just like to reiterate what Mrs. Kukic has said to you all, and that you're all your own individual people. You all had constituents from your ward elect you in. You need to stop letting Ron Zona boss you all around, when- especially whenever you go back in there behind closed doors, because they didn't elect for you to come here and just follow suit of what Ron Zona wants, okay? And I get it, Ron. Ron is a state trooper of many decades, and I have all the respect for that. But you can't let that and him being in a conflicting position as chief detective of this county sway you in any way whatsoever, okay? He has no more power on this board than any one of you that have also been elected in. And I just, I need you to really drill that down in your mind here, because it's just, you know, we're not out of state trooper barracks here, folks, you know? This is a political committee. You're a governing board that we're all elected in by constituents. So, and I just, I honestly, I do worry for those of you who side with him or go other ways. You don't think for yourselves, like Mrs. Kukic has asked you and told you of, because, you know, I believe it is a matter of when, not if. You will all get taken to court. I mean, I think Mr. Carosa has a very strong case here. That is a matter of when, not if. And those of you that are just being complicit and not so much, you know, accountable as enablers of wrongdoing, you'll still be held just as accountable, those of you that are complicit. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next resident's Nat. Just wanna come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Nat Hayes. I live in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. I'm an engineer at the Gateway Engineers, and I'm representing Mr. Dennenberg, who's in the audience regarding the Lincoln Corner Plaza Two development project. We have concerns that the proposed development does not permit safe excavations that would allow the construction of the proposed building without necessitating temporary excavations steeper than the codes and township ordinances allow. Moreover, none of the exemptions in the township ordinances have been met to permit a steeper temporary cut slope. The proposed excavation for the rear building wall and adjacent block wall ignores the township ordinance requiring a five-foot horizontal distance between either the toe or top of the excavation and the neighboring property line. The township ordinances we have identified in this letter that will be added to the record are Sections 84-19B2A and C, 84-19B5B, and 84-19B7D. All of these are regarding excavation and building limits adjacent to property lines. The proposed development, based on the drawings that were provided to us, consists of a single-story building with walls flanking it along the northerly property limit. According to the plans, the northwest corner of the building is approximately cut seven feet below the existing surface grade, and the northeast corner of the building is cut approximately four feet below the existing grade. The UCC and OSHA codes set out in federal and state excavation regulations, per the codes, a vertical excavation greater than five feet should be sloped away from the bottom of the work area to permit a safe zone of construction activity for the workers. Based on the type of soils noted in the project drawings, the codes require temporary slopes laid back at a one and a half to one ratio. The North Huntington Township grating excavation and filling ordinance mirrors these state and federal requirements. Applying the codes and township ordinance on this project, the resulting horizontal distance of temporary excavation to permit a safe code-compliant slope to construct the corners of the wall is 10 feet. The distance between the proposed finished corner of the building wall and the Dennenberg property is approximately 5.38 feet. According to the developer's architect's letter dated January 29, 2025, the building wall will be set on a foundation that extends three feet, two inches beyond the rear of that building wall. Therefore, an additional three foot, two inches of excavation is necessary beyond the proposed rear wall, such that, given the 10-foot horizontal cut slope necessary to excavate in compliance with the ordinances, the actual limits would be needed is 7.7 feet, which is still well into the Dennenberg property. The proposed excavation also triggers ordinance 84-19B5B, which addresses protection of adjacent property and utilities. The ordinance section requires that the horizontal distance from either the toe or top of the excavation or fill slope line shall be five feet or one-half the vertical height of the fill or excavation from any adjoining property or easement line, whichever is greater. The proposed building wall is 4.4 feet from the property line on the northeast side and 5.38 feet on the northwest side. A code-compliant excavation to construct the foundation and back wall of the building would violate this ordinance. In addition, the Township Ordinance 84-19B2C states that excavations adjacent to any footing, foundation, or structure shall not extend below the angle of repose or natural slope of the soil under the nearest point of the same unless such footing, foundation, or structure is first properly underpinned or protected against settlement. Proposed retaining wall three, which is a soldier beam and lagging wall, will extend at a vertical height of 12 feet high, or adjacent to the 12-foot-high Dennenberg retaining wall. The excavation for retaining wall three will extend below the natural slope of the soil under the nearest point of the Dennenberg retaining wall as near as one foot. So based on this ordinance, this proposed retaining wall, irrespective of the means and methods of installation, is still too close to the Dennenberg retaining wall. On June 19, 2025, the developer submitted a modif- modification request to this township ordinance stating that the waiver is being requested for the southern wall along SR 30 right of way. I guess I have shorted over time. So in short, based on our review, the building wall as well as the flanking retaining walls, the excavation required for them will extend into the Dennenberg property, as well as a portion of those final wall positions will be within the encroachment limits set within the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next resident is Rick. You wanna just come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Rick Keenan, 700 Legar Road. I have one question. Was R4 zoning eliminated? I went to the office back there, over-questioned, and the woman back there told me, "There is no more R4." When I bought my house, I was zoned R4. And if they changed the zoning without telling me, I think something's a little shaky here. So I'd like an answer of whether yes or no, if they eliminated it, whether that was a mistake back there, or if it's a violation of me not being notified. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next resident's Mike. If you wanna come up to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please?
Mike Puschak. I live at 12480 Adams Drive. I'm here tonight related to the stormwater runoff in Jacktown Acres. First, I'd like to thank our Township manager, engineers, and public works director for meeting with me and other Jacktown Acres residents to discuss our runoff issues. And thank you to Commissioner Gray for also meeting with us. I would also like to thank the Township and our Public Works Department for installing a temporary replacement pipe at the Roth Drive in Jacktown Acres Park and the landscaping that's currently being done to get our community park reopened very soon. Please keep in mind, while these efforts are appreciated, the temporary replacement pipe that was installed is still undersized for the location and has an undesired bend in the pipe. During our meeting with the Township engineers and manager, they said they would complete the review of the Army Corps of Engineers study, which they've just gotten, and define a project to be budgeted and completed in 2026. I would like you guys to please commit to actually doing this project and get it on the books. It needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. I believe our last resident's Tricia or Patricia?
Good evening. My name is Tricia Henning. I am the attorney that's here on behalf of the Dennenbergs, the owners of the adjacent property to the north of the proposed Lincoln Corner Plaza development. Last time I was here, I asked if I should present this during that time on the- on the agenda. You told me to do it now. So if you want me to present when it comes up on the agenda, I will. Nat Hayes just presented on this as well. If you want me to continue now, I will.
You can continue now. It's fine.
All right. First, I ask that the letter that I handed up, that Nat wrote from Gateway Engineers, be incorporated as part of the record here of this proceeding. So as Nat was telling you, there are two areas of this plan that we have issues with. First, retaining wall three that is proposed within feet of the Dennenberg property and the Dennenberg's long- longstanding retaining wall. And second, the excavation required for the wall, the rear wall of the proposed building. First, retaining wall three does not comply with the township's excavation and grading ordinance, as Nat told you. Your engineers pointed out, and our engineer confirmed, that the proposed wall does not comply with this ordinance as no plan was submitted to property. comply with this ordinance, as no plan was submitted to properly underpin or protect the Danenberg retaining wall against settlement. The township solution to this issue appears to be to approve the amended plan with the condition that developer comply with certain unspecified outstanding engineering comments from KU, the township engineer. This is not sufficient or proper. The amended plan violates your ordinance, and best practice suggests that you should either disapprove the amended plan or at minimum table this until the developer provides proof that they have complied with the ordinance and will properly underpin and protect the Danenberg retaining wall from settlement and damage prior to them beginning their construction. Additionally, because of its position on the property line, retaining wall three requires a special exemption to your excavation and grading ordinance. It requires that all retaining walls be at least within three feet from the property line. The developer has not submitted this required special exemption request to the township, yet this approval is still in your proposed resolution to be voted on tonight. By looking at the plans, you can see that retaining wall three is proposed to be just about touching the property line. Obviously, this violates your ordinance. Your engineers pointed this out, and your engineer has also pointed out that the developer requested a modification for only the front retaining wall around Route Thirty side of the property, not retaining wall three on the Danenberg side. According to your ordinance, a special exemption must be requested, and the developer must demonstrate that this variance is necessary. The developer has done neither. And then beyond your engineers' comments and concerns regarding retaining wall three, there is still the unaddressed issue of the significant and undeniable trespass that will occur on the Danenberg property when the building excavation takes place. You have a signed and sealed letter from a reputable engineer informing you that the building cannot be built according to code within the property lines. Your engineer will also confirm this if they look at the codes and the proposed building and foundation plan that was submitted just this June. According to federal, state, and township ordinance, the excavation necessary to build the foundation and the back wall of the building will approach at least seven point seven feet onto the Danenberg property at one corner of the building and three point five feet over the property line at the other end. Tonight, the township appears ready to approve this plan with the additional modifications that have not been fully accepted by your engineer. You should table this until these concerns are resolved, and you should require the developer to meet and discuss these issues with the Danenbergs to work out a solution. We have tried multiple times to talk to the developer through his attorney to come to an agreement, and we've offered to negotiate a construction easement. All of these attempts have been ignored. You are on notice that what you are set to approve tonight cannot be built without a very significant trespass of over seven feet onto the Danenberg property. We did not want things to get to this point, but if this is approved, we will file the suit to get an injunction, which will be successful because there is no possibility that the proposed building can be built without encroachment and trespass onto the Danenberg property. At this point, the township knows this, and if you approve this, you will be party to this trespass. So, you should deny this amended site plan or table it until the developer submits proof that they can excavate the site and install the building and retaining walls in compliance with federal, state, and township law without encroaching on the Danenberg property and causing damage. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you do have a copy of the letter, correct?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other residents who would like to speak tonight that didn't get a chance to sign the book at the podium? Just name and address for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. My name's Reg Sefranco. I am with Ascent Consulting Engineers. We are the site engineer for Lincoln Corner Development. I'm here to just talk on a couple of points of the Phase Two, Lincoln Corner Plaza Phase Two. Just some clarifications. It's my understanding that what's being brought up for the approval tonight is a proposed modification request that we submitted for wall number two, which is located along the Route Thirty right-of-way. That request is to have the proposed face of wall be one point five feet away from the right-of-way line versus the ordinance requirement of three feet. It's my understanding that that request has a favorable recommendation from the planning Just the follow-up on some other notes. We have been coordinated with the township, the township engineer, and KU Resources with any outstanding comments that have been brought to our attention at this time. We have coordinated any comments with KU, the wall engineer, with a phone call on July eleventh with respect to a review letter that we received July eighth. Myself, KU, and the site's wall engineer was on that call. KU requested only one additional analysis to be run for that section of wall three. We have provided that and submitted it to the township for review. KU had no other comments or concerns with this wall. There were some other minor comments on the plan itself with respect to an accessible ramp location and some painting. We've made those modifications likewise. There was a question of whether or not wall three, there was a verification of how close it was to the south, the northwest property line, whether it was closer than three feet. We've made concessions on the plans to make sure that that is clearly stated, that the face of wall should be at least a minimum of three feet from the property line. Those materials have been submitted to the township for review. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else that would like to speak tonight that didn't get a chance? Response, assistance input, and I believe we had three people up talking about Lincoln's Corner Phase Two. We can address that, and I believe it's on the agenda at that time. Mr. Keenan, Director Fonzie, or excuse me, Assistant Manager Fonzie, could you maybe follow up with Mr. Keenan about the R four?
Yeah, we have not eliminated the R four district, so I don't know how Ms. Perlinger explained something to you, but we can certainly address that if you want to stop by or give me a call or whatever.
Okay, well, she said R four was eliminated.
That's not the case.
So, Mr. Keenan, if you reach up to the office, we can maybe tell you exactly what your zone for your property and follow back up with you. And then Mike, about Jacktown Acres with flooding issues ongoing, I believe, like he said, I'm Andrew Falk, and Public Works was down there, and Commissioner Gray, so I believe we probably have some follow-up with that we can bring back to the board.
I would like to address it right now a little bit. Where'd you go, Mike? Oh, there you are. Sorry. As you know, and you got a copy of the letter we were sent by Mike Daven, resident of Roth Drive also. He states a lot of facts in there. I was on the board when that pipe was originally put in. And the original project was to be a box culvert because I didn't think at the time, they said, oh, this'll work, but it may not be big enough. I think somebody actually said that. But the box culvert made out of concrete that would be wider and everything went by the wayside. It went as far as discussion, heavy discussion, because I actually reached out to an engineer with a utility company to find out what it would cost to have the cables lowered or have the power rerouted temporarily so that the crane could come in and set the box culvert. And we were that far along in talking about it. And then the professionals at the time, being the manager and the engineers, and said that was going to be cost prohibitive, and therefore, we should go with the pipe with a ninety or thirty-degree bend in it, which, I'm not a plumber, but I haven't, I've done my share of plumbing, but you don't put a bend in a, a serious bend in a drainage pipe. Causes a pressure buildup, and we saw that a few weeks ago. It just dislodges and explodes, whatever it was. But we, you and I and Matt Beal have talked about this many times. I've talked to Mr. Daven about it too. So, the information I gave at the time was accurate based on the professionals saying it first. So, I feel for you. I would like to do it right. My concern right now is just what you and I had discussed, that too many times a temporary repair gets kind of pushed out of the limelight and it becomes permanent. So, I would like that not to happen, and I support you and the residents about that. So, that's all.
If I may, just want to let you know that Cody and I have a meeting tomorrow with KU Resources at the site, at Jacktown. We've reviewed the flood risk management, the planning study that was for long run that was prepared by the Army Corps. One of the main projects, there's three different projects that they recommend. At Jacktown Acres, they do recommend to get one-hundred-year design flood protection, a new culvert with the minimum dimensions of fifteen foot wide at the bottom, an elliptical arch, and nine foot high. We're going to meet with KU to entertain a proposal for them, to do the engineering and survey and permitting work. And we will be back to you in August with hopes that you would approve their proposal to move forward. Ballpark, around a half a million dollars. But that's a rough ballpark. It's, again, it's an elliptical pipe, fifteen foot at the bottom and nine foot tall, and basically the width to carry the stream through. It's very difficult to take a stream and shove it through a round pipe. This will not be a round pipe. It'll be elliptical. We will talk about plate arches, concrete culverts, and all the options, and have a estimate with each one, in hopes that this can be a twenty-twenty-six project. This type of project is perfect for the stormwater fee, and you've heard that a number of times. I've been an advocate for it. And hopefully, sooner or later, the township will approve a stormwater fee. I live in Hampton Township in Allegheny County, and I pay, for the last five years, been paying a stormwater fee. It's typically around nine or ten dollars a month, a hundred to a hundred and twenty dollars a year earmarked for MS four and flood management projects such as this. And we have many more projects, so we'll be back to you in August. And hopefully, whether we get funding for this or not, but we're hopeful that we can do this project, the highest priority project in twenty-twenty-six, and get rid of that pipe that's not functioning properly. Thank you.
Thanks. Any other comments, assistance input?
I'd like to. I'd like to make a public service announcement. Although most of the citizens who come up and speak at meetings, they have good intentions. Some of them don't. Some of the comments are based on speculation, hearsay, conjecture, and downright lies. All for self-promotion and individual gain. So, please, while you're watching the comments and the meeting, keep this in mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a knowledge, Board of Commissioners is held to execute this session after our last week's meeting on July tenth, to talk about legal matters. Approval meetings minutes for the special meeting six, twelve, twenty-five?
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in fair by stating an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero for the regular meeting six, eighteen, twenty-five?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes five to one, one abstention. Payment of bills?
I'll make the motion that we pay voucher number four-three-six-nine-five through voucher number four-five-one-zero-zero.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by stating an aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Staff reports, Public Works report, Director Holinsky?
Good evening. Just so the boards aware and the general public, if you see a cone or paint or something in the street in front of your house, and it seems to be there for a short time or what you might perceive to be a long time, just, we're aware of everything. We're getting very inundated with work. We're dealing with things, trying to deal with them in the order they come in and the severity. But we're well aware of everything, and just so everybody knows, we're working through things one at a time, and we'll get to it.
Any questions for Public Works tonight? Thank you, Director Holinsky. Park and Recreation Report, Director Kincaid?
Yes, there were a couple programs and events that I accidentally omitted from my report. So, this Friday, July eighteenth, starting at dusk at Ocala, we will be showing a movie in the park. We're going to be showing Wicked. So, anybody who wants to come out and watch Wicked at the park will be this Friday at dusk. Then on Saturday at Ocala, we are going to be doing a community drum circle session. So, that will be from twelve to two PM at Ocala. And then Saturday as well, Saturday night, starting at eight-thirty PM at Braddock's Trail Park, we are going to be having a night mothling program where we will attract moths and study them. And then we are working with the rec board and the Norman School District to put together a school supplies drive, starting at the beginning of August through August seventeenth, to collect school supplies for children in need in the school district. So, if anybody has any school supplies laying around and would like to donate it, we will have collection boxes around the township, especially here at the townhouse. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions on Park Recreation? Thank you. Emergency Management Report, Coroner Mahenski. Anything to add here for tonight, sir?
Nothing additional.
Any questions for Emergency Management? Police Report, Lieutenant?
Thank you. I'd like to announce that the Junior Police Academy with a great success. I want to thank the officers who dedicated their time and effort to make this a great experience for our children in the community. We have a rash of theft from vehicles in the area. Criminals are opportunists. They're targeting unlocked vehicles. So, please, I'm asking you, just lock your vehicles and don't keep your valuables in your car, and absolutely don't leave your weapons in there also. They're seeking out unlocked vehicles. And one more thing is, our detectives are still working with surrounding law enforcement officials and other communities who's also experienced the vehicle thefts from a few months ago. They're tracking down the criminals who are targeting our kind citizens. So, it does take time to gather this information, vital information, and go forward and bring these people to justice. And as always, we have a great community. I love the support, the officers that get approached on the street and going into business, that the community just really appreciates us and the work that we do. That actually motivates us to do a better job. There's a lot of bad things out there that we experience, and having that positive, just a smile sometimes just really helps us, keep us going. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for the police report? Thank you, sir. Engineering Report, Engineer Gravie?
I have nothing additional.
All right. Did you have anything to add?
No, I was going to talk about long run then, but just one more comment about long run and Jacktown Acres. It doesn't really do us any good to point toward the past. Let's just take what we have with our study and move forward and follow the recommendations of the study and get these projects done one at a time and done the right way. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Community Development Report, any questions on the fire officials report tonight? Subdivision Land Development Director Andrew Kovach?
I have nothing further to add.
Subdivision Land Development?
Couple items for action this month. Item number- Couple items for action this month. Item number one is SP 01-2024, Lincoln Corner Plaza, two revisions, State Route 30. Motion to approve the plan on June 2024 with conditions and five modifications. I believe there's a little misunderstanding on what's, what we're on the agenda tonight. This is actually wall number two that is along Route 30, not the rear wall. There has been no, they're still going back and forth with the engineering of those, the wall and other conditions that were on the original site plan. So, this is solely the modification for the wall on Route 30.
Can you speak a bit about what was said here, though, today about that back wall too, though? Is that, I mean, can this be built, and can they do everything they need to do without going on the neighboring property? Do we know that?
I mean, that's still under review right now. They're still on the back and forth with the engineering comments. We, staff is not aware of any further modifications that are going to be requested. But we're letting KU Resource make that call for us. If there are modifications needed from the grading ordinance, we have not heard that yet. So, again, they're still going back and forth with the wall design and how that's going to be built.
And that third wall that they were discussing, that was already approved in our original approval for this site, correct?
Correct. It was an approval with conditions. So, one of those conditions, as Ms. Henning stated, is a catch-all comment that says all outstanding engineering comments will be satisfied. If they don't meet that condition, then the plan doesn't get built.
Okay. And the wall in the front, I know we discussed this last week, instead of three feet off of State Route 30, it's going to be a foot and a half.
A foot and a half.
And that complies with all of the PennDOT regulations, and that's safe having that wall. And you said it's going to be about like a four, maybe a four-foot wall at its tallest?
Along that stretch, yeah. Where it parallels the property line, it's going to be just under five feet, and then it tapers down to less than a foot.
And that wall is going to be one and a half feet off of 30.
Correct. It'll be outside of the right-of-way.
Okay.
Per PennDOT regulations.
Any other board discussion?
Sorry, refresh my memory. Is there pedestrian traffic along that section?
There is not.
There is not. I couldn't remember off the top of my head. Thank you.
Just for the record, Mr. Fonzie, for the catch-all language for wall three, again, I know that's the catch-all language, it's already been approved, but they have to satisfy the KU Resources. Could one of the requirements of KU Resources be that if they have to build the wall and encroach on Danenburg's property, that they would need a construction easement or a license to do that work? That may come from KU Resources.
Yeah, and that's kind of what we're waiting for. We are unaware right now if anything additional is needed, but that's kind of where they're at, they're in the process. So, if something else is needed, then they'd have to come back through this body to get an approval on a waiver modification.
I just wanted that to be clear for the audience.
We would never issue a permit allowing somebody to go on somebody else's property to build something.
For the construction.
Right. Intentionally, yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Zona?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevan?
Yes.
President Haggas?
Yes. Motion passes five to one.
Item number two, S14-2025, the Ambaroso consolidation. Motion to approve the lock consolidation on Oscar Court.
Motion to approve.
Second. Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Item number three, SP 06-2025, Bear Peak Shoddy Solar Farm. Motion to preliminarily approve the solar farm on Shoddy Hill Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
And item number four, S13-2025, Andrew Kovach Eller Yoc Plan. Motion to approve the boundary line revision on Hontown Wendell Road.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Solicitors report, Solicitor Dice.
Nothing at this time.
All right. Thank you. Township Managers report, Manager Falk.
Action to approve the June check register.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
You have a copy of the June budget report. Are there any questions? Seeing none, moving on. Action to approve Resolution Number 126, appointing blank to fill the vacancy of Ward Seven Commissioner with a term ending December 31st, 2025.
I'd like to make a motion. But before I'd like to make that motion, I believe that the candidates are all here this evening, from what I'm looking at. Each and every one of you presented last week. Unbelievable. You all deserve an applause. But there again, unfortunately, we can only appoint one candidate. With that said, I'm hoping each and every one of you run in the January election for the best candidate to fill that spot. And there again, each and every one of you are good candidates, as I said. So, with that said, I'm going to make a motion to appoint Kevin McHugh.
I'll second that, but could we have an explanation of the, there is no election in January.
Oh, excuse me. I thought there was a-
November, I think.
Yeah.
In November, and only one person can run.
Correct.
And it's, please, explain.
Correct. So, only one person, well, you can only have one individual run for, in November, for, to take in January's position. So, you wouldn't be able to have all of these individuals be on the ballot.
I got you. Okay.
And explain how that candidate gets picked, and how many, I think Bruce did already, but apparently people don't quite get it.
Well, I'm not sure what you're asking me, sir.
Each party would nominate a candidate-
Right.
-to be on the ballot for the November election.
The Republican Party and the Democratic Party will select their own candidate. There will be no public voting on the candidate.
For the Republican and Democrat, and if there's an independent that would want to run as well.
Yes, they will pick the ballot candidate, and then there will be public voting, either one side or the other.
Correct. Correct.
Thank you.
And that's on November 4th.
Is that, I don't know the date.
Well, thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. This is my first experience on appointments, so.
Right. Well, it's different during different times.
It is.
The only reason there is somebody on the ballot is because of the length of time that the vacancy will exist. And it's during a municipal election year. Previous appointments weren't during a municipal election year, so whoever got appointed didn't have to run.
And to remember municipal election years is usually the off, two years after the presidential election.
Right.
All right. So, there's some clarification on that. We did have a motion for Kevin McHugh.
To, go ahead.
And we have a second, correct?
Yes.
Commissioner Gray.
But he will be appointed to serve until December 31st.
Correct.
And then, we'll see who gets selected by the party to be on the ballot.
Okay.
Correct. So, there's a motion and a second. Any other board discussion?
No, I would just like to echo what Tom said. I thought all the candidates that spoke did a great job. I would have been happy with any one of you being on the board. I think you all would have done a great, great job on the board. So, thank you all for coming out. It's nice to see so many people want to get involved and be involved. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Commissioner Gray.
Speaking of which, being involved, I agree with Ron that we appreciate you all stepping up. And don't go away. We have board appointments in January, and stay involved. You can make a difference, see what goes on, and be really energized to run next time. So, thank you.
Thanks. I would echo the gentleman's statement as well. And then, if you are interested in running for the election, reach out to your local party, whatever side that would be on, and try to get your name on the ballot for that, if you're interested with that as well. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six to zero.
Action to advertise ordinance number 2313, and ordinance establishing rules and regulations for business license permits and general business regulations.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Roll call vote, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
No.
Commissioner Zona?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevan?
Yes.
President Haggas?
Yes. Motion passes four to two.
Action to advertise for the positions of Code Two Driver Labor for Public Works.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
This advertisement is a public advertisement in the paper to hire, right?
Correct.
It's not an upgrade within Public Works.
It is not. It is to hire.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approve, six to zero.
Action to appoint a legislative liaison to the PA Municipal League.
I'd like to make a motion that we have Commissioner Zona, if you would accept that motion.
I would accept it if it's seconded, correct?
Yep.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approve, six to zero.
Action to select the background welcome signs for the price of $2,650 each. There's the white background without the logo, and then there's a blue background without the logo, if you recall from the-
I'd like to make the motion that we approve the, and there again, I'm okay on either color. I guess whatever we would choose, but I prefer the white background. But there again, I'll leave that up to everybody else as far as color. But I'd like to make a motion that we approve purchasing these and putting them out in the four locations that we discussed last week.
I will second the white background.
Any other board discussion?
I think this is kind of a waste of money when we have people being flooded, we have drainage issues. We don't have a, what'd you call it, a stormwater tax yet.
Fee.
So, a stormwater fee tax. Yeah. So, I oppose this.
Any other board discussion? I believe, Manager Falk, correct me if I'm wrong, that this was budgeted for in prior year's budget.
We do have a $25,000 line item for street signs, and this would be in that line item of street signs.
But those are for street identification signs, right? That's the-
It's broad. We also do have another line item, a capital improvement project line item, that we can put that under as well. But again, each location has to be decided on the permitting, the easement, if they're willing to get access, site distance, the whole nine yards.
Okay.
All right. I believe there was a motion and a second to purchase.
Can I, just to add, can we, can we check into those locations first before we order the signs?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah.
Just so we don't have them sitting around here, and then we can't put them up.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion? A motion and a second for ordering four welcome signs with white background. All those in fair by state and-
One more question.
Yep.
If we check those locations and have to enter into an agreement, will that come back to us?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I believe we had a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call vote, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
No.
Commissioner Zona?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevan?
Yes.
President Haggas?
Yes. Motion passes four to two.
Action to advertise for bids for the 2025 MS4 pond remediation program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Action to approve the proposal from KU Resources in the amount of $12,600 for the Kendra Dam.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero.
Action to approve change order number one for Contract 2025-01 in the amount of $25,850.25 for the 2025 million in resurfacing program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. What was this change order for?
Engineer Robinson.
This is for adding Walerba Drive off of Pine Hollow Road, and also portion of Scott Hill Two. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approve, six to zero.
Action to approve change order number one for Contract 2025-02 in the amount of $21,850.95 for the 2025 fiber mat ceiling.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approve, six to zero.
Action to approve the bond reduction for Tuscan Hills Phase Four in the amount of $44,244.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approve, six to zero.
Action to approve St. Agnes Church to sell alcohol at their bazaar, scheduled for August 1st, 2nd, and 3rd of 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote, Manager Falk.
Commissioner Hempel?
Yes.
Commissioner Atwood?
No.
Commissioner Gray?
Yes.
Commissioner Zona?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevan?
Yes.
President Haggas?
Yes. Motion passes five to one.
And that is my, end of my report. Thank you.
Any further board comments tonight?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion. All those in fair by state and I.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes six to zero, meeting adjourned at 7:59. Executive session to follow, talk about legal matters.
Good job. Good job.
I didn't know what you were on, and I was like, I get my, I was like, that's all right.
It should have been more clear. It is an odd situation, the way you have to, the way it's done. Doesn't, almost doesn't seem fair. I mean, why wouldn't you let everybody run? I don't, I disagree.
You know what I mean?
Then you would get into a situation that 10 people run, nobody would get them into any battles.
We're talking about how big the ratings were good for.
Well, it's almost crazy, too. Like, you could have, they could see-
Just for you. Just for you.
Somebody who's not running for a seat, you're full now. Like, I haven't been on any municipalities, but nobody's running for that seat. So, now, somebody who gets 10 votes, you know, in the prime, that's it. That's all you need.
Yeah.
Which, yeah. It didn't happen in mine, but one person got nine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no idea upstairs.
Yet everybody else had to win all these additional, like thousands or whatever to win their.